This meeting is now in session, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We are being televised live on Van Buren Television, Channel 12 and on YouTube. Clerk Wright, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Trustee Kelly.
Here.
Trustee Bourne. He's absent and excused. Trustee Martin here. Trustee Frazier is also absent and excused. Treasurer Bud.
Here.
Clerk Wright is present supervisor.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you, thank you clerk. Our first item was going to be closed session, but we're gonna amend the agenda. I'm gonna go out of line a little bit here. Well, tonight there'll be a closed session discussing negotiations in our collective bargaining agreements. There's gonna be consent agenda which consists of board meeting minutes, the prepaid list and the voucher lists. And there's new business today which includes the discussions of the 2025 Van Buren Township Employee and Salary Policy Updates. That's a big thing for us. Discussion of the Hagerty Park Improvement Project, we're gonna try and fix up, do some more work fixing up Hagerty subdivision again with up to $200,000. And discussion on a proposal from progressive companies to complete a limnological assessment of Belleville Lake in the amount of $13,800. We're going to be seeing if we can start improving the water quality in Belleville Lake. Moving on, can I go to the adoption of the agenda? Treasurer Bud.
I make a motion, we approve the agenda as presented with one exception, we're going to move the closed session and after the board comments, just before adjournment.
Second, support. Mr. Kelly, I have a motion, I have a second, all in favor. Aye opposed, this motion passes. Adoption of the consent agenda, would anybody like to read that? Trustee Martin.
I make a motion to adopt a consent agenda with the following items. Number one, board meeting minutes of September 2nd. Number two, prepaid list of September 4th. Number three, prepaid list of September 11th. Number four, voucher list of September 16th, all of 2025.
Thank you, can I get a second?
Support.
Treasurer Bud. I have a motion and I have support, hearing no discussion, all in favor. Aye opposed, this motion passes. We have no public hearing today, so we're gonna move right into correspondence announcements and presentations. Director Gerhardt, could you come forward?
Good evening, Board. I would like to take a moment to present two items that we are at the VBC going to be having for members and their guests in the month of September and beginning of October. On Friday, September 26, we are hosting a movie on the Plaza at the Van Buren Community Center Entertainment Plaza. This event has been getting a high level of interest and engaging engagement on our social media channel, which tells us people are excited to come out. It's a free and family friendly night where folks can gather outdoors, bring blankets and lawn chairs to enjoy a movie together under the stars. We're excited to start this as a new township tradition. Due to specific licensing, we cannot disclose the title, but we can give you a hint. A young orphan boy with lightning bolt scar discovers he's more than ordinary on his 11th birthday. Then, starting the following Monday, September 29 through Thursday, October 2, the Van Buren Community Center will host our free fitness demo week. This gives members and guests the chance to try out a wide variety of classes for everything from step aerobics to gentle yoga to ballroom dancing, all at no cost. It's a great way for people to explore what works for them before committing to a full session. We hope it encourages more participants to engage with our fitness programs and discover how fun and accessible wellness can be here, be right here in Van Buren Township.
I also understand Birthday Mondays is back with a bang?
It is.
And I understand we had over 40 people at Bingo?
We did.
Okay, great, yeah, things are, yeah, people are coming back, thank God.
And we had a great play last weekend.
Oh, that's right, what was the play?
Cat Couple.
Very good.
It was good.
I've got, you know, I brought this thing in here only because Kevin Lawrence brought it into my office. And this may not look like a big deal, but it is. This is a water and sewer capital improvement report for years of, we can do one year, two year, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. The board approved the software that I wondered if would ever work. It's AI, it takes all the information from all, I mean, from every single solitary water meter we put in to a line we fixed, to the whole thing, and it abunds it all up and through AI develops 5, 10, 15 year capital improvement plans. This is wonderful because we have to re-up our capital improvement plans every two or three years. And we spend sometimes as much as $50,000 to do that, but if you don't, you don't know where you're gonna be and how much money you've got to hold off and think. This is pretty neat, this was expensive, it was like 15, $20,000, I think, a year, or is it one time? Yeah, anyway, this is a lot of bang for the buck for us, and I'm kind of excited that it came out, so. Kinda happy, so. Anybody else have a comment? Alright, nope, alright, we're moving on then to public comment. Does anybody from the public wish to make comment today at today's meeting? Anybody from the public wish to make comment? Oh, I'm sorry. Are you getting, oh, you're getting ready for your, okay. Hearing no, we're gonna move on to unfinished business, which we have none. And we're now into new business, which will be, will begin with discussion on to consider approval of all policy updates regarding travel, purchasing, credit cards, policies, procedures and salary benefits. This has taken us three months, can I get a motion?
To the chair.
Trustee Kelly.
I move to consider approval of all policy updates 2025 for travel, purchasing, credit cards, policies and procedures and salary benefits.
Trustee Martin, would you, is that okay? Alright, Director Sumter.
Good evening, Board. Just a few moments ago, I passed out the updates to the outline as well as the policies and procedures manual. I also sent up an email to you all earlier, just to make sure you had it, and those are the paper copies that I promised you. So, over the summer, we have had several conversations during our work study and collectively as a board with your directors on all of the policies that we mentioned. Tonight, I am here to ask for consideration for the 2025 policy updates and revisions as follows. The travel policy, purchasing policy, credit card usage, the policies and procedures manual, as well as the salary benefits manual. I would also like to ask for approval to do any clerical cleanups and formatting consistencies, minor missed updates from prior versions, and any administrative revisions necessary for clarity. With that, I will go ahead and start with the outline you have in front of you. Have any questions before I begin about any information you have? None? Starting off, the outline of proposed changes. Please be mindful that the page numbers match the policy that is listed, not the board packet page numbers if you're looking at it on your phone or computer. Starting off, we start off with the travel meals and lodging expense policies. The update will be to page three. It will read, a meal daily per dam will be provided based on the GSA.gov site, regardless of any meals, regardless if meals are provided by the training seminar. We will be updating that. We'll also be updating the travel expense report. Second policy we will be updating is the purchasing policy. We will update the expenditure controls. Where now directors have the judgment to approve a dollar up to $5,000. 5,000, one up to $10,000, the director can authorize his or her signature with the approval of only one elected official now. $1,001 up to $20,000, the director can authorize his or her signature with two full elected officials. 20,001 up to 40,000, an informal bid is required. This does require all three elected official signatures and notification to the board of trustees. 40,001 and higher, a formal competitive sealed bid is required. Page six of that same policy, emergency purchases, director should notify the board immediately of any purchases that we have to do. Next policy is the credit card policy, page two. Paragraph one will remove all language with the exception of that last sentence that's listed. Paragraph three will be removing all language with the exception of sentence four in that policy. Adding, the credit card holder shall submit receipts clearly marked with the appropriate account to be charged immediately upon the return to the township. Next policies that will be updated is policies and procedures. Table of contents, pages seven through nine will all be updated once we finish approving everything tonight. The appendix, page nine will be updated as well. Violence in the workplace will be condensed and combined with section 7.22 of the policies and procedures. The ethics policy, we will remove number seven and move it to section 7.15. Rules and conduct of outside employment, that will be moved to 7.13. I'm sorry, section 7.13. Disclosure of business interests will be separate from the policy, you can now get those from HR and I will get that out to anyone who needs that. Electronic mail retention, that will be changed to appendix A, data management policy, which I talked to our IT director and he agreed, that was the best title for that new policy being added. Computer policy and usage guide will be removed. Prohibition against using a current time while still working with the township will also be removed. Social security number privacy policy will now be moved to appendix B. Point classification table will now be appendix C. Social media will be combined with section 7.10 of the policies and procedure. Section 1.10, page 16, nepotism, employment and relatives. We will now remove personal relationships in the second paragraph from that section. Section 1.12, page 17, internal transfers and promotions, language was added. Section 3.07, page 26, pension and deferred compensation, we remove 30 days and add it immediately after. Section 3.14, page 28, other benefits. Meals and snacks during meetings, removed all three elected officials and added, you will now report to your respective official if you need permission to do those. Section 4.02, page 29, holidays. We have added, part-time employees are eligible for holiday pay for recognized holidays that fall on days that they are regularly scheduled to work. Section 4.03, page 29, vacations. Part-time employees are eligible for one week's vacation annually, provided they have completed one full year of employment. Section I is blank for some reason. Section J, 4.04, page 30, paid sick days, we move Estelle from 4.07, other unpaid leaves to this section for part-time employees. Section 5.05, page 37, emergency planning. We added language in the VBT safety manual online and removed the language from that section. Section 7.10, page 45, social media acceptable use, added to the social media policy previous appendix K. Section 7.13, page 50, outside employment. Added business relations previous to appendix C with new language. Section 7.22, page 60, violence in the workplace, we added language there. Section 7.24, page 61, dress code. We have now added gym shoes to the appropriate attire section, and yes, you can wear all white gym shoes. Section 7.26, vaccination mandate, page 63. We removed the last sentence in the first paragraph and all remaining subsections of that policy. Now, we're moving on to the salary benefits manual. Again, we updated 30 days from pension deferred compensation, page four, and we added immediately after. B, we added paid time off days, page five. This will directly affect how cash outs and how the purations of the salary employees get their time, their PTO. There will be started next to additional hours earned from C already agreed to be paraded on the employee's anniversary date. Cash out 150 hours removed, date of hire prior to January 1st, 90 language, as all those employees have now retired. C, which is the big one, I have had some discussions with a couple of employees regarding this, but I think they understand it now. Salary PTO cash out language has been updated. 250 hours are available for cash out or carryover. You may either cash it out or carry over max of 150, but no employees, no salary employees can do both. If you have questions, you can see me tomorrow or send me an email. The last part of that will be all remaining time must be used throughout the year, or it will be lost. With those changes and others, if you have any questions, I'm gonna answer them for you this time.
We've had board meetings, we've had workshops, we've had numerous management meetings. We've had discussions amongst the three of us, you know, where they find to his home.
clerical fixes.
She's done a great job.
It needed updating, I don't know, when was the last time we updated this?
Legal was last year, but just for all these concerns, it's been a while.
Yeah, it was summer cake language here, and really, there's no greater concern really to the public except for maybe the part timers getting a vacation every now and then, but part timers have become the backbone to a lot of our organizations, and losing part timers is not a good thing, so. We need to figure out how to keep them, and can't think of anything else.
Alright, well, thank you for listening to my long spiel tonight, Boarding, you have a great night. See you in close session.
I have a motion by Trustee Kelly and it's supposed to be Martin. Hearing further discussion, all in favor? Aye opposed, motion passes, thank you. Okay, item discussion and to consider approval of, oh, I missed one, okay, Hagerty Park Improvement Project, for not to exceed $200,000. Can I get a motion?
I make a motion, we approve the Hagerty Road Improvement Project not to exceed $200,000, coming from the Building and Grounds, capital O-L-A, 101265971.
Can I get a second? Kelly? Alright, Director Doring.
As you know, Hagerty Neighborhood Park has long been a quiet and cherished space in the Hagerty subdivision, providing neighbors with a place to gather, play and enjoy the outdoors. Located with entrances on both Hamilton and Jackson Streets, the park currently offers a pavilion, play structure, picnic tables, grills and open green space. Over time, some of the park's amenities, most notably the play structure and the swings, have reached the end of their useful life. A certified playground inspector formally deemed them no longer repairable due to unavailable replacement parts. So, in August, the over 700 households in Hagerty Sub were notified of the park's condition and are tentative plans for improvements. We sought residents' feedback through online surveys, knowing how valued this hidden gem is to the community. We received a response rate of more than 10%, which is really high. With overwhelmingly clear input, residents regularly use the park and strongly value the play structure. The majority of the respondents expressed excitement at the possibility of a new playground. So, our planned improvements based on the resident input and safety needs, our department has developed a comprehensive plan for the improvements. First off, our removals, we'd like to remove the existing damaged play structure in the swings. Two in-ground picnic tables under the pavilion, which are damaged and lifting from the ground. A vandalized playground safe information sign and a damaged cement slab once used. Now, our restoration plan is, we're gonna keep the pavilion, but give it a fresh coat of paint, kind of a facelift. Originally, we were gonna keep the two picnic tables that are installed under the pavilion, but Jason just told me one of them was broken since the time I sent the memo till now, actually the outside ones. So, we're gonna probably end up replacing all four picnic tables now. We're gonna keep the garbage cans, the existing park signage and open green space. We'd like to install small soccer nets in the green area, a new basketball slab and hoop, depending on funding. And then for the most exciting part, our playground replacement, we'd like to install the treetops play structure, which we selected for its innovative and nature-inspired design, compact footprint, integrated shade and ADA compliance. This structure offers children the sense of climbing through the treetops while providing numerous sensory and physical play opportunities. We're also gonna install a new swing set, which will include two child seats, one toddler seat and one ADA compliant bucket seat, features which we don't have on any of the equipment now. And myself and Director Renaud personally visited and she played on this play structure at one of the parks. If anyone wants to see it, a park in South Gate, it's called Cobb Park, they have the same one there, if you wanted to check it out. So, if approved tonight, all these improvements could be scheduled for completion by the end of November this year. We're confident that these upgrades will revitalize Hagerty Neighborhood Park and ensure it continues to serve as a safe, inviting and vibrant space for families. Any questions?
Questions? Trustee Martin.
I do have one question, and, excuse me. I saw that you added picnic tables, whether is it possible to have a bench, just like a sitting bench?
Can we add a bench, is that what you're asking?
Yes.
I don't see why not.
I mean, just because people like, maybe they walk and they wanna sit and rest, and not necessarily sit with a, on the picnic table, you know, be able to rest their back and sit.
Oh, sure.
Nice little bench, thank you.
Director Lock loves installing benches.
Does he?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Any other questions?
Happy to oblige.
So, the entryways have two walkways. Whenever I've gone there, I seem to remember that the cement's pretty broke up. It's not, the walkways.
The ones on Hamilton and Jackson?
Yeah, mm-hmm.
I don't know that it's necessarily broke up, I know the one, and I might be saying the wrong one because I'm really bad at directions, but the one on Hamilton, which I think is the double wide one.
Yeah.
That one, it's not really broke, but they have a giant mulberry tree there that makes it really slippery and dangerous, yeah. But we can have them, check it out too, see if we need to replace those.
All the sidewalks there, I wanna make sure that the concrete is redone, if it needs to be, yeah.
Yeah, because we had talked about replacing that bollard that's there too.
And the board has always stressed the fact that this is, that this is a front door community, it's 750 homes, and quite frankly, as Hagerty Sub goes, so goes the rest of us. If it's a nice road as you walk into our community, then you've gotta, then you think that way about our community and it affects all of our property values, so. You know, we've done a lot of work there, we've done the sidewalks, we pushed Wayne County to do a lot of work on the roads, the tiring. We've gone through there with blight control, we've ripped down a couple houses, at least inside there that we needed. The park is the next step, we've actually, I think Director Akers is looking pretty strong on about a half million dollar, $400,000 grant to redo all their ADA, is that right, sidewalks? Okay, so we're trying to get a big grant for them to, we're gonna keep on chipping away until it's all done, so. If that's, the board good with that, so. Alright, any other questions? Hearing none, we have a motion by Treasurer Bud, supported by Trustee Kelly. Hearing no further discussion, all in favor? Aye opposed, motion granted.
Thank you.
Alright, next item, Clerk Wright, did you want this one, because I walked over you twice. Next item is consider approval of a proposal from progressive companies to do an assessment of Belleville Lake, Clerk Wright.
I'd like to make a motion to approval of a proposal from progressive companies, complete a limnological
Yeah.
assessment of Belleville Lake for a cost of $13,880.
Okay, oh, I need a second, I'm sorry, you're right, he's looking at me. Okay, Martin, got it, go ahead, Director.
Thank you, so recently staff has been, and leadership have been approached by some concerned residents regarding, you know, not only water quality issues in Belleville Lake, but also invasive plants, which have started to sprout up in certain areas of the lake. So, in order to get an idea of the scope of the problem, we've reached out to a company called Progressive to complete an assessment of Belleville Lake and recommend strategies to address some of these challenges. Progressive was referred to our residents and to the township by the Huron River Watershed Council as they complete this type of work in other lakes on the Huron River system. Progressive has an extensive history of providing similar services to lakes outside of the system as well, all over the state of Michigan. We've included in the packet information about their expertise, their experience, some of the individuals who are supposed to be involved, as well as an article which summarizes some of the work they've done on Silver Lake. The scope of work of this proposal includes lake mapping and aquatic plant assessment, water quality sampling, stormwater contribution assessments and the preparation of a summary report with recommendations. There will be, as part of this proposal, two public engagement sessions, with the first being a town hall style soliciting feedback from residents about various issues on the lake, and the second being a presentation of the findings of their study. The provided report will have findings of the assessments and provide recommendations for how to address issues with cost estimates provided. And it is anticipated that the study will begin later this month. They're actually calling me this morning to talk about scheduling. And we should have a completed report around March 2026. After the completion of this plan, there will be additional costs related to the implementation of any recommended strategies, and at that time, we're gonna have to have additional discussions on how to proceed moving forward. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have about the proposal and look forward to discussion.
Questions from the board? I'll start, then you guys can chime in. So, they've started the Facebook page, the Lake.
Hearing none. We have a motion by Treasure Bud, supported by trustee Kelly. Hearing no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion granted.
Thank you.
All right. Next item... Clerk Wright, did you want this one? 'Cause I walked over you twice. Next item is consider approval of a proposal from progressive companies to do an assessment of Belleville Lake. Clerk Wright?
I'd like to make a motion to approval of a proposal from progressive companies to complete a limo logical...
Yeah.
...assessment of Belleville Lake for a cost of $13,880.
Okay. Oh, I need a second. I'm sorry, you're right. He's looking at me. Okay, Martin. Got it. Go ahead, Director.
Thank you. Recently, staff has been, and leadership has been approached by some concerned residents regarding, you know, not only water quality issues in Belleville Lake, but also invasive plants, which have started to sprout up in certain areas of the lake. So, in order to get an idea of the scope of the problem, we've reached out to a company called Progressive to complete an assessment of Belleville Lake and recommend strategies to address some of these challenges. Progressive was referred to our residents and to the township by the Huron River Watershed Council as they complete this type of work in other lakes on the Huron River system. Progressive has an extensive history of providing similar services to lakes outside of the system as well, all over the state of Michigan. We've included in the packet information about their expertise, their experience, some of the individuals who are supposed to be involved, as well as an article which summarizes some of the work they've done on Silver Lake. The scope of work of this proposal includes lake mapping, an aquatic plant assessment, water quality sampling, stormwater contribution assessments, and the preparation of a summary report with recommendations. There will be, as part of this proposal, two public engagement sessions, with the first being a town hall-style soliciting feedback from our residents about various issues on the lake, and the second being a presentation of the findings of their study. The provided report will have findings of the assessments and provide recommendations for how to address issues with cost estimates provided. And it is anticipated that the study will begin later this month. They're actually calling me this morning to talk about scheduling. And we should have a completed report around March 2026. After the completion of this plan, there will be additional costs related to the implementation of any recommended strategies, and at that time, we're gonna have to have additional discussions on how to proceed moving forward. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have about the proposal and look forward to discussion.
Questions from the board? I'll start, then you guys can chime in. So, they've started a Facebook page, the Lake Front Owners, about the quality of the lake. And I'm embarrassed to say that I did not know, my wave runner was broke down this year, so... I did not know the weeds have been moving in as much as they are. I know the lily pads have. But I didn't know that the investigation by the Lake Front Owners, it's been amazing. I mean, you know, they're sending it off for study, to find out what weeds it is, whatever... What problems they have, which is invasive, which is natural, how do you get rid of them? They're coming up with great ideas. The problem is, they're all coming up with different ideas. So, we went out and hired, through the DNR, the best engineering company that handles lakes. Step one is, they're going to go through and figure out what we really have on that lake. What are our real issues? What, you know, is it water quality, or is it weeds, is it lily pads, is it five different kinds of weeds? Can we... And then, based on that, they're going to come up with a solution to improve the quality of the lake. That will have a price tag. At that time, we're going to have to begin talking about who's gonna pay that bill, because generally, the Lake Front Owners will be part of that solution. That's how every other lake in the state of Michigan does it. But right now, we have to identify what the problem is. And then, you know, we're also have told them that we wanna cut back some of those lily pads, and so, there's a certain percentage we can, and so, maybe we can cut some canals through those things so we can open up some more shoreline for some of the residents that haven't seen shoreline in a long time. And the last part is basically a warning to the Lake Front Owners that haven't been maintaining their property. We're coming and we're gonna start ripping docks out. If you haven't been maintaining your dock, it's on our property, it's gone. So, better get out there and fix these things up, or get them out of there. That's it for me. Well, we really, you know, we do a master plan on our Van Buren Park, at Quirk Park. We've done a master plan on our administration building, on our... We do a master plan on everything. We never did a master plan on the lake. It's arguably the best thing we've got. So, this is step one to a master plan to fix it and keep it up. We're even told the PFAS that are coming into our lake that there's a new startup company in Detroit that's got these charcoal bags that they can drop by the bridges. Still experimental, and it's... But it's not that ridiculously expensive, and you can literally filter the PFAS out before it gets into your lake. So, there's lots of different things we can talk about over the years here. Okay? All right. Anybody else? Okay, I've got a motion by Clerk Wright, and I've got a second by trustee Martin, hearing no further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? This motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Reports? We have none. Public comment. Is there anybody that wishes to public today... Wishes to comment today on anything? No? Okay. Board comments. Is there anybody that wishes to comment from the board? You know, I think they all feel about this political violence has just gone far enough. I mean, it's just insane what it's doing. Whether you love or hate, or whatever you are, this is just absolutely wrong, and I know that everybody I've talked to up here feels the same way about it, so... All right. I'm gonna call for a closed session, so we're gonna be leaving, and then when we come back, we're gonna adjourn. Can I... What do I do? I have to go from...
Make a motion to go into closed session.
Doesn't have to be a roll call?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion and go into closed session.
Support? Okay, I've got a motion, support. Clerk Wright, could you call roll?
Trustee Kelly?
Yes.
Trustee Doring is absent and excused. Trustee Martin?
Yes.
Trustee Frazier, the same. Clerk Wright, yes. Chair you?
Yes.
Supervisor?
Yes.
We go to closed session.
Okay, thank you.
I got a motion that got support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's passed.
You gotta make a motion in close.
Make a motion to adjourn this board meeting.
Make a motion?
I heard a second. All in favor? Aye. Posed. We're adjourned.